Alright, let's call the order of the Township of Ocean Planning Board Regular Meeting for... Oh wow, that's great. Can we not have that?
Just mute the computer.
Is it still doing?
Regular meeting agenda for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can we have a roll call please, Claire?
Here.
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 Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, no doubt, indivisible, and every justice for all.
The notice of the requirements for the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent to the Asbury Park Press, News Twelve, and the Coaster, and filed in the Office of the Township Clerk on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. There's emergency exits through the courtroom doors, two exits at the rear of the room. No smoking, board policy, no new cases to be started after ten thirty, and no testimony taken after eleven P M. All meetings will be video and audio tape and shown on the Township of Ocean's Community Cable Channel, Channel twenty-two on Verizon FiOS, and Channel seventy-seven on Cable Vision. All cell phones must be turned off. If you need to make a call, go outside to make a call. Cases carried to October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three to be held in the Public Meeting Room Municipal Building, Deal and Monmouth Roads, Oakhurst. First French-speaking Baptist Church Block Thirty-eight, Lot Seventy-one and Seventy-two, Twenty-seven ninety-five dash twenty-seven ninety-seven, Asbury Avenue, Ocean. Resolution Memorialization. Saint John Cato Balata, Block Twenty-five, Lot One-ten, One-eleven, One-twelve, Two-thirty-five, and Two-thirty-nine, Delaware Avenue, Oakhurst, Zone R four. Can I get a second?
Second. John.
Ed Defilia. Who's the second?
It's not me. Nope, wasn't me.
It was John.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Nothing?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Close?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Bennett, you're excused from the rest of the proceedings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nice job.
I appreciate it, and have a good one, work, Bennett.
Good job.
Good job.
I didn't turn out late. I wasn't there.
Jim, would you like to take over?
You know, what I will do, I don't really, I shouldn't take over the meeting, but I will explain what a master plan is, what the process has been up to this time, and as we discussed upstairs, some of the more recent changes to the drafts
Okay.
that have been included.
Beautiful.
included in this draft tonight. And the, the plan that the board, that the board and the public is looking at tonight is the most recent draft. As, as far as time goes, it's a final draft right now, but it may not be the final document that's reviewed and voted on by the board, depending upon what happens tonight. Just generally to explain what a master plan is to begin with. It's a very broad-based policy document. It's not law. It's not something that somebody has to get a variance from, because you don't get variances from the master plan. The master plan is required by the Municipal Land Use Law of the state of New Jersey to, by, by the municipality for the planning board to adopt it in order for the township to have a zoning ordinance. And that's the, the primary function of the master plan, but it is also a broad-based document to guide development in the future as, as the township progresses. And it's a very fluid document, too. It can change very frequently. And in fact, the land use law requires that it be reexamined every ten years, at, at a minimum every ten years, to see what's changed, to see if there need to be changes to the master plan, or whether the goals and objectives of the master plan are, are still in effect and still valid. And basically, we, the last full master plan that was developed, that was adopted in the township was in nineteen ninety, but there were nu- numerous amendments to that master plan between nineteen ninety and the present. And there were numerous, numerous changes to land development in the township, which that master plan was based on, and that the, the development, the township developed much, much more. There's very, there's much less land available for development. Right now, there's about a hundred and seventy acres that are developable in the township out of over seven thousand. So the township is about ninety-eight percent developed, and of that hundred and seventy acres, much, some of that, and I can't tell how much without somebody going out and doing a study, but a lot of that is environmentally sensitive wetlands or floodplains or so on. So my estimate would be there's about a hundred developable acres in the township right now, as opposed to the seven thousand acres that exist. The last, most recent draft of the master plan, prior to this one, the planning board did have a, a meeting, and some changes were suggested. And those changes involved, first of all, a change to the comments in the Utility Service Plan regarding electric service and the adequacy of the electric service in the township, to recognize that the way things are going, there's going to be continued increased demand on electrical service, and recommending that the township look at the possibility of alternative energy sources to help meet that demand. And again, it's a very broad-based document, it's a very broad, broad recommendation. No real specifics in it, because it leaves it up to the governing body and the zoning ordinance to come up with incentives and so on to do the, have alternative energy, energy, alternative energy resources. It also ma- is recommending expanding, right now, the, the area in the township where cannabis facilities can be, is a very, very small, very compact area, and is recommended that the governing body look at expanding the areas where those facilities can be, primarily because the tax base in the township, because the township's almost fully developed, the tax base is almost static, and it's important to get other forms of revenue for the township, and that would be one form of revenue, as long as it could be done in a way that's not going to adversely impact surrounding neighborhoods or surrounding commercial areas. The circulation plan, the township currently has a bike, bicycle, and pedestrian plan that is quite frankly obsolete, and it was not done with enough detailed studies so that many of the recommendations in that plan can't be effectuated because of the, because of the circumstances with the street rights of way, the topography on the sides of the streets, and so on. While some of those recommendations have been implemented, some of them, there was an attempt to implement them, and it just couldn't be done. So it's a recommendation that that plan be updated, significantly updated, with a much more detailed plan that can be much more functional. The circulation, and then other things that are recommended in the master plan that are, that are new, as opposed to the older master plans, are to look at the various neighborhoods in the township, and where the zoning of those neighborhoods is completely inappropriate, where the, the predominance of the lots are undersized, the houses maybe require significant variances, and the zoning board is going through a period where a lot of applications are coming in for variances that are not unreasonable, but, but they're necessary because the lots in those areas really aren't characteristic of the zoning standards. So there are some areas, for example, in, in Wanamasa, where the master plan recommends creating new zones that are more reflective of the character of that area. And that goes along with the municipal land use requirement, that zoning give reasonable, reasonable consideration to the character of an area. So to take a, say, a five-block area and make eighty-five, ninety percent of the, the properties in that area non-conforming, really is not consistent with the land use law. So that's, some of the recommendations in the master plan, go for that also, go towards that also. The master plan has a number of elements, an open space and conservation plan, which actually goes through on a lot-by-lot basis of all of the properties in the township that are open space, breaks them down by category, and also has a community facilities plan. And it's, while it's a plan, it's really, in, in some instances, it's not something that the Planning Board, or even the governing body, has control over. For example, the schools. The schools are under the control of the Board of Education, and they come up with a five-year, tri- year plan every year that the state approves. And while the master plan can make recommendations and make observations, it really doesn't have a lot of influence on what happens with the schools. One thing, I know there's been a lot of chatter on the internet about the fact that the school populations are decreasing, and that's a concern, and the master plan just can't deal with it. Because, especially in a community that's nearly fully developed, such as Ocean Township. If there are a lot of open space available, then maybe the master plan could recommend higher-density housing that would bring in more children and help fill the school buildings and help that situation. But you don't have that in Ocean Township, and I was discussing this with my, my daughter, who's also a planner tonight, and we decided that you can't really make people procreate, so you just need to... It, it's, it's an observation in the master plan, but there's really nothing the master plan can do about that. You have a, a circulation plan, again, that analyzes all of the streets and recommends various improvements to the, to, to, to streets, where different intersections should be studied, and looks at what, what was recommended in the past, and what's now, you know, what has been done and what can continue to be done. And there's, there's always going to be a need for street improvements. It also, again, the last draft before this, this, this draft that we have before the board and the public really didn't have a lot of emphasis on mass transit. The board wanted to put more emphasis on mass transit, so that was done in the, the latest iteration of the master plan. There's a recycling plan, which doesn't change very much. It, it talks about the county recycling plan, it talks about what's being done in the township, and, and basically recommends continuing to do what's been done and to try and adapt as things change. The land use plan is basically, almost an existing land use plan, because the township is so developed, it looks at the different areas of the township, and as I said, there are some areas where the zoning doesn't reflect what's really there, so it makes some recommendations for changes there. There's an area in Wayside where there's about fifty or sixty homes that clearly do not fit the zoning out there. There's a recommendation that those, that area be changed to R four, because all of those homes are basically ten thousand, eleven thousand square foot lots. And anybody who wants to do anything on any of those properties now has to come to the zoning board for a variance. So it's a recommendation in the master plan that the governing body look at rezoning that area. And there are a lot, a lot of little things like that. One thing that is been, being recommended is that the industrial area in the southern end of the township, along Sunset Avenue in that area, be looked at with the possibility of creating a destination type of area that would be called a fermentation district, where you could have breweries, you could have wineries, and have commercial, s- commercial activities associated with them, very similar to Kane, but maybe even making Kane the, the center of that, that district in terms of the centerpiece. So these are, and they're all things, and again, the specifics are not in the master plan. The specifics will come out in the zoning, when the zoning is done. And I think that pretty much describes it. One, one thing that was done is after the last board meeting, when we discussed the master plan, I discussed with several members of the public about adding goals and objectives to the master plan, which is a very good, good suggestion, and that was done. So there are a number of goals and objectives now in this, this version that weren't in the last one.
You, you don't have to raise your hand, you know you can just talk.
I know, but I just want to make sure. Jim, do you want to give some context about the process we went to get through this and how long it took, and...
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Do you want to, do you want to talk to the process that we went through, and how long it took to get to this point, point in time, and the reviews that went on, and just to give everybody a sense for that?
The process that went on with this master plan, and I've done a number of master plans. Normally, what happens is that the board hires a consultant, the consultant does a draft, the board sits, reviews the drafts, makes whatever changes they want to, and there's very, very little, if any, public input at the beginning of the process. The public input comes at this hearing, the master plan public hearing. This master plan had a tremendous amount of public input at the very beginning. There were some comments that were, were made that were taken very seriously. One of them, which I, I don't think I mentioned earlier, is that there's a recommendation in the master plan that certain areas of Wanamasa be studied to determine whether or not they have historical significance, and whether or not a historical district should be set up in that area. And there may be some areas of Oakhurst also that could dovetail along with, with that type of recommendation. That was, that was a recommendation from members of the public at the very beginning. As I said, I discussed with the several members of the public after the last hearing about goals and objectives, and that is a good suggestion. And the, the one problem with making a lot of changes is that the development patterns are established. It's really refining them, refining the circulation patterns in the township, ma- making the intersections work better, and to basically, just trying to work with what we have and, and make it, make it better and make it a more livable community.
Okay. Alright, so let's, I think by now everyone has read the master plan. Let's hear from the public, so I, what, you...
Yes, we, yes, we do have rules.
You have a rule?
Yeah.
Only one rule?
We, we have rules.
Okay.
One person at a time.
Right.
Five-minute maximum.
Okay.
Can't give it up to anybody else.
Right. I was going to say the same thing, by the way.
Oh, go ahead.
But thank you. I was going to say, you know, there's thirteen, I counted, there's thirteen people here. So we come up as orderly, let's start on this side of the room, and we'll work our way over. And then come up, do your name, your address, and you have the floor. We're here to hear what you have to say. Let's start. Who wants to go first? There we go.
My name, my name is, is this on? My name is Kenneth Lutz. I live at eleven hundred Brookside Avenue. And soon after I moved to this area in nineteen, in the early nineteen seventies, I joined the Environmental Commission. I'm still on it. I was actually chair of the Environmental Commission for almost twenty years, and as such, we even started the defunct Shade Tree Commission, which I also chaired for about the same period of time. In seventy-five, I joined the League of Women Voters in town, when they allowed men. I was chair of the local land use committee, and part of the work we did, I think, was, was instrumental in our getting Welch Park as we know it today. After I received my PhD from Johns Hopkins University, I went to work for Bell Labs.
Mr. Lutz, I, I mean, I appreciate hearing about all...
I'm giving my background be-
Just, just give us your comments about the master plan, sir.
I will, I will. But I have to tell you that I spent my career doing planning. I planned new telecom networks, I went around the world and did it, and then I changed fields, and I'm now planning future electricity grids. I developed two courses and teach them at the University of Delaware. And my point is that I know the town, and I know planning. I've written dozens of plans, and in my humble opinion, if I had written a plan of this quality, I would have been fired from my job. I don't think it, it carries what we need in a plan. The different pieces don't hold together, there's no connection between the different sections. It's mostly a status report of what exists in town. The nineteen ninety plan was full of maps and charts and tables. I don't see them in this plan. You talked about stakeholders. I'd like to see the list of stakeholders and people who are talked to, because when you do a plan, you need to talk to a lot of different stakeholders. I've seen the, for example, the bicycle and pedestrian plans that were referenced. I'd like to see a map of all the green spaces and how they're connected, and how bicycle and pedestrian plans fit into that. And the bicycle and pedestrian sections are not even connected to the section on Open Space and Conservation Plan, nor the Community Facilities Plan. And then the Required Climate Change Related Hazard Vulnerability Assessment, which is required, it's a mouthful, is, is sort of an afterthought at the end of this plan, and we're missing an opportunity to connect a lot of things together through that assessment. It could tie together impervious cover, open space, trees, stormwater, flooding, traffic, emergency communications, and electrical infrastructure. It's missing a plan on telecommunications, talking about people working from home, which is an assumption, although the papers in the past couple of months have talked about people being called back to work, so I'm not even sure all the assumptions are correct. And finally, I think we need a vision, even though we're assuming things can't change very much in town. I disagree. Route thirty-five is a horrible barrier between the east side and the west side. I'd like to see Route thirty-five more like Shrewsbury, where the speed limit is lower, maybe a median strip in between. People can make left turns, so I don't have to drive two miles out of the way to get to a shopping center. It would, it would enhance the value of our businesses, it would bring shoppers in, and it would allow people from the west side of town to easily get to our recreational facilities and parks on the, on the east side of town. So in sum, I would just like to say, I see this plan as making incremental changes, and after thirty-three years, a lot have cha- has changed. And I, Edison did not invent the light bulb by making incremental changes to candles, and I would like to see our master plan be that light bulb that really lights the way to our future. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it possible to me to sit?
Sure. Yeah, I think so, of course. Yeah, please do.
I've been out all weekend.
Yeah, might as well, go ahead.
Is this on?
Is this on?
It's on.
My name's Harold Cassidy. I live at One Surrey Lane. I live on the corner of Roselle and Surrey. Basically, I have questions, so I'm hoping you can answer the questions. Okay? For instance, what, what precisely is the affordable housing overlay? I'm looking at the map, and it covers the better part of two golf courses. Okay? And it says it's the affordable housing overlay. Now, what exactly does that mean? How much affordable housing would go in there? That's one question. And of course, we heard that the plan should be reflective of the character of the area. Wicca Peko, we, we've lived in town for forty-six years, we lived on Surrey Lane for thirty-nine of those years. Wicca Peko used to be the estate area in this town. It's been subdivided, you know, schools were expanded. But it's a nice neighborhood. And my family's invested in the property. It's an acre and a half, we spent a ton of money improving it. We have an interest in knowing what's going to go on the golf courses. This doesn't tell me. I'd like to know. What exactly is affordable housing? I'd like you to tell that to the public. And how much affordable housing is going to go on the golf course? And how will it change the character of the neighborhood? Why can't we have nice neighborhoods? We have to have affordable housing everywhere in the town? I mean, how many garden apartments do we have? So these are some questions that I have. As an aside, and this isn't what I came here for, I don't know why we need cannabis stores. I don't know why we have to promote our children, grandchildren, to be smoking marijuana and weed. There are plenty places to get it. We don't have to do it here. Is it possible for anyone to answer my questions?
Sure. Jim, can you address the affordable housing?
With regard to the affordable housing, unfortunately, that is not something the board has any control over at this point in time. The township was sued by a number of individuals and developers for affordable housing a number of years ago. It was in courts for many years, and the plan that was developed is a plan that was a settlement between the litigants and the township, that was pretty much forced on the township by the courts. And it's, it's included in this plan because it has to be part of the master plan, but it can't be changed. It can't be changed without going back to the courts and going through the whole extended process again, and the courts would probably not allow the changes.
But where in this plan do you disclose the nature of that agreement that you reached?
It's, there is a affordable housing plan that's approved, and it's on file with the clerk's office. It's probably online, too. I don't know if I, I haven't looked for it online, but I have a copy of it on my computer. And the, the point is, it's a court decision. The time to get involved to try and influence it would have been while it was in court. And it's, it's simply, it's not going to change for the next three or four years, and then there'll be a next round of affordable housing requirements, and then maybe the time to look at it and say it's going to change. I don't see either of the golf courses developing for affordable housing in, in the nearer foreseeable future.
Couple of questions. What percentage of the golf courses can be affordable housing?
Well...
All of it, the whole thing?
It can be.
And are you telling us that the court selected that site?
Yes.
So those of us who are offended by it...
Sorry.
Can bring their own lawsuit. You don't have to answer-
I don't think it would go anyplace at this point in time. And I was not involved in that affordable housing suit. There's planners that specialize in affordable housing. The township hired a firm that specializes in affordable housing. The developers hire planners that specialize in affordable housing, and the court hires a planner called a special master that specializes in affordable housing. And basically, the-
Not to interrupt you, Jim, but I, I mean, I'm going to interrupt you. The, the golf course would have to be sold, and a developer would have to develop the land, and then there could be a, that's where they would put affordable housing.
That, that's, I think so.
Right. But that's not, that's, we're not, I don't think that's the case right now.
I just, I, I understand that, but I need one clarification. You said it was a settlement, which was court-approved. What exactly, who decided that the golf course is going to be a hundred percent affordable housing?
The courts.
The, the court is the one who made that? It wasn't, it wasn't offered by the town?
No, it was not offered by the town. To my knowledge, I wasn't involved in the, in the lawsuit. But the point, the point really is that, I mean, if you want to call me and talk to me about it, I'll be glad to talk to you. But it's not going to have any bearing on this hearing tonight.
I understand.
The housing element is there, it's, it's, right now, it's in stone, and the board cannot change it. They cannot take it out of this master plan or amend it without the township being sued again.
I apologize that I'm asking questions.
No, I, I, and I apologize to you, I, you, obviously- You obviously don't understand the process. And I'm not really trying to belittle you. I'm just trying to make you understand that-
Which process are you talking about?
The whole, the process with the housing, the housing element and fair share plan.
Which element, the court, the court procedure?
The whole process. Court procedure, the master plan process. This is now the township's housing element in its master plan. It was developed and approved by the courts. It was a settlement a number of years ago.
You said it was approved by the courts. Which is it?
You, listen-
This is my last question, I promise.
Just switch off of the housing thing and you have any other questions?
I do, but I'm not going to take any more time. You told me five minutes.
Well, you could talk about those other things. You made your point about the housing.
I haven't made my point because I'm still don't, I still don't know what happened. I'm being told it was a settlement, but I'm being told that-
The town was sued.
But the terms, I understand.
Because we're not, I don't think you understand, all the apartments that are in the town don't count towards our affordable housing.
I understand it was a Supreme Court decision that came down forty years ago when you're trying to comply with it. I understand.
But that has nothing to do with the master plan.
Okay.
Can I just jump in real quick? This is a huge if. You have to understand the if part. You've got two golf courses that have over a hundred year history in this township. If they were to sell, you're talking about a big if, then they would become part of the affordable solution to the township based on the court's decision.
I understand that.
But when I tell you this is a huge if, this is a huge if. Because you're talking about big money and history and people are not going anywhere.
Except, except we're being told tonight, or I'm being told tonight, and I didn't understand it. Maybe it's my fault. But the entire thing can be affordable housing. So any developer could come along any day and make a massive offer to the owners of the golf course. And one that they may not be able to resist. So it's not like it's a hypothetical question here.
So let's go back in history. Deal Golf Course was offered this opportunity, I think it was either fifteen or twenty years ago. And it could have happened, but it did not happen.
I understand.
So the answer is, it could happen, but-
All right. I'm not going to take any more of your time. I appreciate your, but one, let me just tell you what I really would like to resolve. I'll try to work with whoever can answer the question directly. It's, it sounds to me, there's a conflict in what I'm being told. There was a settlement, which means that the town had to agree to something. Okay? Now I'm being told, no, that the court imposed this. That the court said, you have to develop your two golf courses as affordable housing. The court didn't do that, did they?
Wait, what I can do is I will provide you with our fair share agreement with the courts, but it's not a master plan issue.
Well-
It's not.
All right, I appreciate your patience. Others would like to talk to you. I did have some other questions, but my time is up.
No, it's five minutes, no. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for letting me sit.
Oh, anytime. You can sit anytime. You want to sit too?
Yes, please. I know the microphone works, unless you're chagrin.
Oh, no, what? I find that very objectional what you said to my chagrin. We're here.
I'm sorry.
We're all here volunteering our time to hear what you have to say.
I was being flippant and I apologize.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
My name's Dennis Howlett. I live on Holbrook Street in Oakhurst, sixteen thirty-eight Holbrook Street. I'd like to make some observations. I don't really need answers to these observations. I read the master plan, obviously. I did find it a little bit uneven. At certain places, there was a lot of detail and other places, there was no detail. But I'm going to ask some of these things, and as I said, I don't need answers tonight. I don't know the correct name, but I didn't see, on page eighty-seven in that area, there was these wish list of things that were going to be done. I don't know the correct name for sure. But were there any plans, are there any plans for dredging or remediation of Snell Pond, which is the pond that is off Brookside? I know at one town hall meeting I was at, some neighbors came up and talked about that and they were told by the mayor and other people that they were working on dredging that and doing some remediation on that pond. I didn't see that in the master plan. Also, I know that there are something like twenty contaminated sites in Ocean Township, mostly from gasoline and from petroleum spills. Should they be mentioned in some way in the inventory of land if they'll inhibit development or use? Or if there is some notation of that in the master plan? And if there, and I'd like to know if there are any remediation plans for all the contaminated sites that happen to be in town? I happen to be one of the people that was opposed to the Wawa gas station. I don't know if there's a place in the master plan to make any note of whether the town needs any more gas stations or can support any more gas stations. And if it were possible, that if somebody were to put in a gas station, that maybe a requirement to that might be that they remediate one or two of the other already contaminated sites. That's just a thought. I was going to ask if there's any need for charging stations. I didn't see anything about that in the electrical grid stuff. And for what it's worth, I saw neither the word solar or wind appear anywhere in the document at all, if you search for those words. I'd like to ask if there's a plan for the area near Poplar Village that is vacant now, that was flooded out back in Sandy. It's vacant except for some asphalt. And that seems like a very good place to either rewild it or put in some trees. I know trees are a problem because you put them in and then nobody takes care of them. It's a big problem going forward. But this is a bunch of land that is sitting there on Poplar Brook site and might be able to be put to better use. I don't know if that should be in the master plan. In the master plan, there was quite a bit of information about protection for at-risk buildings from floods, et cetera. On Brookside Avenue, I know five lots were brought, I think seven lots were taken out by Blue Acres. But there are plans for new houses to go up there. Are those houses, there's construction for one, at least. If I'm wrong, that's fine. Are any houses in those type of zones, I think they're called SLRs or something like that, are there plans for, from the beginning of construction in those areas on vacant lots, maybe on Fender and places like that, where they must conform to the types of things that would be remedial after they're flooded out? If they are repetitive flood hazards or something like that? And there's a lot of work on that in the plan, in the master plan. Many of the undeveloped areas in the town appear in lists. They're obviously, I can't think of the name, nice lists and they have nice examples describing what they are, as they're environmentally encumbered or they're dedicated open space. I noticed that there's no such qualification on Sally's Hole, which is on Large Wood Avenue. And it's a fairly good sized piece of property. I think it's like one and a half acres. But it just says Sally's Hole on that list with nothing saying it's dedicated or the town owns it or anything about it. It just says Sally's Hole. I see something about a flood wall in Poplar Brook and a detention pond near Playa Park and another detention pond in Whale Pond Brook. I'm just curious as to if you have any idea of what, where they would be? Because it seems kind of difficult to do that. And I'm all for it, but I don't know how they possibly do it without actually wrecking Playa Park even more than it's been destroyed, been disturbed. There's also in the wish list, something about expanding the culverts under the railroad. I've talked to a number of people about it at town. I just wonder how realistic that possibility is. You get New Jersey Transit to put bigger culverts under the railroad. I think that would be a wonderful thing. Is that my five minutes? Okay. I will stop. I will just stop by saying there is no safe way to bike on Deal Road west onto the other side of the highway.
Agreed.
And it's with the-
We all agree.
Amen.
So Jim, can you address any of the things that?
I can address two things.
Shoot.
I'm going to address the dredging. So the town is dredging three ponds. Snell's Pond, we're doing the Fireman's Field Pond, the Fireman's Pond in Wanamassa. And then there's a section over in Colonial Terrace. They're going to be doing that project anytime soon. They're going to take the spoils, put them on the golf course. So you're going to make the golf course a little more exciting. But yes, so that's going on right now. Okay, so I want to let you. Second thing, town just recently had a meeting with the Department of Transportation and New Jersey Transit to talk about this. And it looks like the project may be going forward as far as widening those culverts because they are too small. We understand that it's causing flooding issues. So it looks like the state's on board on this. So we're going to, you know, hold your, hold on because it looks like it's going to happen. So that's exciting stuff.
That would make, that would make a big difference.
Of course it would.
And just to respond to comments on Sally's Hole, it's in the section of the open space and conservation plan. And basically, that section says this publicly owned open space and vacant land consists of vacant lands that are owned by the township, county, or state and are either dedicated as open space or are so encumbered by environmental constraints and/or location that they are not likely to be developed in the foreseeable future. So basically Sally's Hole falls under that category and it is dedicated open spaces.
It just doesn't say it in that chart.
It doesn't say it there, but it doesn't, it doesn't have to. It's a very broad based plan. And it is what it is.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Am I dismissed?
You could stay there longer. Someone may want to sit there, but it's all right.
You volunteered to come up.
Yeah, and in addition, with regard to Brookside, that, there have been some houses that have been approved on Brookside in flood plain areas, flood prone areas. And they have been raised up to be above the flood level, which is what's required by law. And there's not, if somebody comes in and does that, it's very difficult for a board, for the zoning board to deny that application.
I know they didn't come for our board.
And that's on new construction there?
What?
New construction or?
Yes, new construction, yes. Yeah, they're allowed to use their property. You can't take their property away from them.
They'd be raised up and it's venting underneath.
Yeah, there's venting underneath.
There's a hole.
I, I wouldn't build there, but yeah.
I've dented enough tonight, John.
What about the mention of charging stations, solar and wind?
Okay. The, again, it's a broad based document. It talks about the issues utilizing alternative energy resources. And rather than hemming the governing body into which specific ones they want, it gives them the option to use one or the other, or maybe all three. Maybe you would have solar as well as wind and any other alternative measures that may come up in the future.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, at the last meeting, per my recommendation, we changed solar and wind to renewables in general so we could cover them all and not be limited to one.
I just searched for solar and wind.
Yeah.
And as far as the charging stations go, there's actually a state law that requires that now for all new site plans.
I have a question for Ron. Ron, can you just address the Blue Acres area that were bought out by the state? My understanding is that is not buildable, is that correct? All right. So they're not building on that Blue Acres.
I know, I knew that.
Okay, just want to make that clear. All right.
And this also recommends that there are areas in the township where there are properties and flood plains that should be acquired by the township. It's a matter of getting the money to do it.
Did I have the wrong name for Snell Pond? I just couldn't find it.
Sounds right to me.
Yeah, because it wasn't in the document.
Okay.
Anyone else on this side of the? Are you coming up?
I'm taking notes.
You're just taking notes, okay.
Well, I have a bunch of notes in here that are master plan.
Okay.
See what's being said versus what I have.
So you want to, you want to, you want to wait?
I want to wait.
All right. On this side of the room, who else would like to come forth? Oh, sure.
Very popular, right?
The chair is popular. We should do this more often. We should have the chair. Should we put a chair on the side?
I don't know if I refer to it as the chair.
Yeah.
We could call.
The seat, the seat perhaps?
We're all sitting, so you should be permitted to sit too.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Alex Hayes. I live on Dow Avenue. I do happen to be a member of this Township of Ocean School Board. I am in no way representing or speaking for them. I am here as an individual taxpayer and homeowner. So in no way do my opinions reflect any of the school board. I just had a couple of questions. I'm also a communications professional. When you throw out a hundred and ten page all text document to the residents and you want to get public opinion, you need to make it a little more user friendly. There should have been like a one pager. There should have been, for one thing, a bunch of photocopy copies here for those people who don't have internet access. I'm not even sure if it's usually at the back of meetings is required.
And we have the master plan here?
We have copies.
Yeah.
I don't know if they were available.
Yes. Didn't you get one, Jackie? You didn't get one last month? Did you ask for one? Oh, okay. Run out? Oh, okay.
It's fine not to kill trees on a ninety-one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Had there been maybe a five page synopsis or something that is a little bit-
It's hard to synopse that document.
Creative artists can do a lot of things with infographics. I do, I have, that was one of my comments. I think I have five. The second one, in the documents where it talks about schools, it does mention that we have three elementary schools K through four. And in fact, that's incorrect. We have a rather large preschool population. And we are quite proud of the fact that we have expanded almost to one hundred percent pre-K spacing for our kids. So I don't know if that affects anything in this document, but when you are having numbers of enrollment and you set only K through four, you're leaving out a significant amount of students and enrollment. There was no mention of a rather large increase in non-public schools in the town. So when this master plan discusses the sharp decline in enrollment, which is true, there is no counter mention of some other factors like more private schools in town.
That is something that is, for planning and zoning and planning and zoning law, is completely inappropriate to discuss. Because it's basically, when land use does not separate ownership or public, private, and so on. And so you cannot turn around and say, well, the reason the public schools are declining enrollments is because you have more private schools. And the implication there is you should prohibit the private schools. And you can't do that. But that's what the implication is if you put that in the master plan.
I see how you, I see where you can infer that. But the way I read it made it sound like the schools are just losing people.
Infer that, but I could see somebody taking the township to court and inferring that in court.
Okay. Thank you. Number three, there is a quote, this master plan does not recommend existing school facilities be maintained and that any improvements be directed to upgrading technology, safety, building codes. So is this master plan in any way, can it force any requirements? What is the authority here of the planning board?
No, it can't.
Okay.
It's just a general recommendation. It's really something of important education.
Okay. And I think my last one is the transitional use areas. Can you explain what they are? It seems four out of the five are in Oakhurst, but also where there is a large number of schoolchildren that live in and around the areas of these four out of five.
These are areas that were previously zoned residential and backed up directly to the commercial that fronts on Route thirty-five for the most part. And the intent there was to create an area between the more intensive commercial development on Route thirty-five and the residential development in the R four zone that would provide a transition where you might have some commercial uses but very low intensity to basically offices and home professional offices, not high volume commercial uses. So that you would have a transition from the high intensity to a moderate intensity to the residential. And that's been in place- And that's been in place for probably fifteen to twenty years now.
So with the blue areas on the map, that doesn't mean anything as far as the homeowners that are already there in those spots?
No, 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 it doesn't. The homes are permitted. Basically, they can develop the properties according to the R four standards, which is the, what the current zoning is.
So it's like changing zoning?
They could put in offices or home professional offices.
So it's like changing zoning in those areas? It's allowing for different zoning, okay. Okay, thank you.
I just wanna, I just wanna say that there's, um, you talked about the pri, the public school enrollment. And it talks about some demographic information and then it says, uh, it is probable that this is due to an increase in number of families who choose to reside in the areas east of New Jersey Route thirty-five, but also choose to send their children to parochial or private schools. Says that.
Thank you, I missed that. Uh, thank you, I missed that.
Okay. Who's next from this side of the room? You're sitting too?
I'm all sitting.
Yeah.
I didn't comment on it. Anyway.
Um, I, I also think that, um.
Just state your name and your address for the record.
Jackie Wenzel Yunkunst. And my address is six Ten Deal Road.
Thank you.
Um, how long have you been working on this revision of the master plan?
Mr. Higgins, I believe it's been about two years.
About two years, yes.
Yes?
Okay. Um, I'd like to request, because many people were unable to make it tonight and they, because they said they didn't have a chance to read what was on the master plan that was posted, because it was just recently posted on, on the website. It hasn't been up there for a long time.
How, how long's the master plan been up?
Much more than a month. The new draft may have not made it to, but there was a ninety-eight point two document there. It's been a year.
But the final draft has not been up very long. I understand that, but, but there are pe, the room is not as full because people didn't have enough time to read it to feel like they could come with the right. You, you've spent a lot of time on it, so it seems like there's been a lot of conversation, but there really hasn't been on the taxpaying resident side.
You were here, eh, to, to be respectful, you were here last we, last month, right?
I'm not talking about me. I'm talking about people.
I'm saying, you were here last month, right?
I was at the meeting upstairs.
That's right, yeah. And so it's usually the same few people that come to the meetings. So you're, you're saying that you want another meeting?
No, because this is a big meeting and the room doesn't reflect that because not as many people were able to come because they, the reason is they said they didn't get a chance to read it.
You know, we could extend it and extend and extend it and there will always be someone else who would say,
Well, no, I just.
I, you know, I couldn't make that meeting, or I couldn't make that meeting. If it was important, they'd be here for the meeting.
Well, I think that this is one meeting and my planning board, big things are being discussed. Often there's been one, more than one planning board meeting.
So that's your.
It could be a consideration.
We'll take your, we'll take your suggestion.
It's a consideration.
Okay.
Okay, because we, you know, we're just getting.
Sure, that's not why you came, that's not part of your questions for the plan.
It's, it's an overall.
It's a plan.
It's an overall uh, opinion, sure. I mean, it's, it's part of the process. Um, um, also there were, you know, I started, but before I read the, the new master plan, what I could get through of it uh, in the short amount of time. Um, there were goals and objectives in the nineteen ninety master plan.
There sure were.
There were. Um, and I used that as a guide as I went through the new one. Um, one of the things that I, I continually brought up at meetings, um, when it came to, comes to overdevelopment or appropriate development for residential areas, is was, what was on the nineteen ninety master plan that said to ensure that the development of individual neighborhoods does not conflict with the development and general welfare of adjacent neighborhoods. And, um, I referred to that quite a bit when I was talking about, you know, the, the construction uh, on the corner of Deal Road and our adjacent residential neighborhoods. So I see in the new master plan, the, the, they're not calling it goals and objectives now, it's purpose, purposes and objectives. Uh, on that point, it says to, to ensure that the development of the township does not conflict with the development and general wealth, general welfare of neighboring municipalities, the county and the state as a whole. So they've eliminated, which was a very important part of this, that new development does not, um, disturb the general welfare of adjacent neighborhoods, which brings it very, you know, personal. It's our neighborhoods, it's our homes. Now, it's been changed that we're, that it doesn't, the general welfare of municipalities. So sort of, I guess how I'm interpreting it, and maybe you can explain to me what that means and what, why is there a change there? Um, I guess any development as long as there's such existing thing, uh, businesses and such, say in Asbury or Eaton Town or, you know, our adjacencies Neptune. Um, that's all that we're gonna be taking into consideration. We're not gonna be taking into consideration when these, you know, three lots are bought and a giant home is put up across the street from a, um, a block of small seaside Cape houses that people had enjoyed, you know, and I've brought this up before, it's not new, about the imbalance of our neighborhoods now. And that we've been changing zoning and giving variances to builders to build larger than what the homes, the general character of the neighborhood and the general character of that street. So I'm more concerned now, cause I feel like that's not even gonna be a consideration if we're just going to be saying that we're ensuring the development with welfare of adjacent municipalities.
Okay, well, first of all, the wording in the current master plan draft is actually in the municipal land use law, first of all. But there are also purposes of the state municipal land use law that pro, provide the protections that you're talking about. And I just couldn't see regurgitating everything into the master plan, right? It's very clear that the master plan, the zoning, more so than the master plan, the zoning should give reasonable consideration to the character of the area.
Right.
And that's what the land use law requires. Now, what you were just discussing, unfortunately, it's, it's a dilemma in the whole land use process. Those ordinances are built upon, are designed upon the fact you have a lot area and a certain percentage of lot coverage is permitted. And if somebody takes, say in, say in an R four area where you have ten thousand square foot lots and takes a one acre lot and builds a house that's four times bigger than any of the other houses around it, you can't stop it. You can provide maybe some regulation that says that the bigger the lot is, the lower the, the size of the house is, but you're still gonna have a large house on a large lot that's out of character. And you can't tell somebody, well, that you have to take your one acre lot and subdivide it into four ten thousand square foot lots. Like you can tell them, you can't take your fifteen thousand square foot lot and subdivide it into two seventy-five hundred square foot lots when the minimum lot area is ten thousand square feet. It doesn't, it doesn't work both ways unfortunately, and it's not, it's something that I'm not comfortable with as a planner.
But.
But in the nineteen ninety master plan, when it goes into more detail on that, it says that new development should not be out of character with adjacent homes.
And that, that's.
Out of character is.
And that was taken out because it's not legal.
So it was, what's been, you know, our master plan for, you said master plan should be done every ten years. It's been thirty years since it's been done.
No, no, I said the master plan has to be reexamined every ten years.
And it had been?
That, that master plan was reexamined probably fifteen times.
Oh, it has been, okay.
But let me, let me, I just wanna say one thing. So as a, as a planning board, when we find that, uh, somebody's building a home that potentially requires R O K for some variance, that might be out of character, I think we really take a lot of effort to make sure that we're doing the best we can to conserve that.
How is it happening then?
Well, you, you obviously haven't been to many of these, um, well, it has, the, the, the ones that haven't, that we haven't been able to do that, those people have a right to, to have that land and build that. But when you brought that case up where it was.
In occurs.
Let me finish.
Sure.
When you brought that case up that there were three, that there was somebody who had, was gonna combine a bunch of lots and build one home, right? In those areas, we've actually kind of been pretty judicious in how we kind of help govern that, um, those, uh, that building. So we do take that into account. We only have a certain amount of leeway for us to take that into account. But you have to, you know, you have to realize that our fiduciary responsibility is to figure out how to maintain some of the character of the, of the area. But when we can't and it's up to somebody else, that's their right to do it and we can't, we can't stop that.
Yeah, well, I, it's just when I spoke to a lot of people while I was campaigning, you know, many of them are affected not only by the visual disturbance of it, but also by their taxes being raised, cause they're now being evaluated. So there's more than just the visual. It's really, um, affecting the quality of life of long-term residents because a new person moved into town, you know, and so anyway, um, but again, I think there needs to be more time. We should have more meetings on the master plan because there are a lot of things that just don't feel right. Um, there was also within the paperwork, they talked about, they talk about historic, um, that spotting was everything, hey?
What?
No, about historic sites, that there are gonna be, um, poss, this is a good thing. There are gonna possibly be markings of historic sites in town.
It doesn't say markings. It said there should be a study to define whether or not there's an area that has historic character. And the reason you do that is so that you can develop architectural standards for that area. You can't have architectural standards just for any residential neighborhood. The law doesn't allow that.
Well, not for, no, but I guess my question then to you is, how many historic, um, properties do we have now?
I don't know. That's why the study has to be done. You have to have somebody come in.
So will that be done before you memorialize them?
No, it won't be done as part of the master plan. It's a recommendation of the master plan. That'd be done. That's a very, very expensive study. It has to be done by somebody that's special, an architect who specializes in historical architecture. That's what, that's what Alan Hurst did, Lockarber did it.
Okay. Um, so in terms then of, of development, new development in these areas and neighborhoods, is there restrictions in terms of how high they can go? How many stories there can be?
That'll be in the zoning.
That's a zoning.
Currently in the zoning.
We have it in the zoning now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be in the zoning and that's going to.
It's in it, it's in now.
It's in the zoning now.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the master plan.
But are we respecting it? Does it get changed? Is it, well, it was also in the zoning map on the thirty-two acres and they just put variances over the zoning when it was in the way.
There are no zoning changes in the master plan at all.
Okay.
And, but Mr. Kirk, to be clear, when it comes to height, there is nothing in this master plan that we are encouraging changing anything regarding height.
Absolutely not.
Okay, so in other part, well, but it talks about R six, R five, it does, it mentions the different zones of, of height of houses.
It does. It, it mentions the different zones only because to say, normally when you do a master plan, you'd say low density residential, medium density residential, medium high density residential. But you have, in Ocean Township, you have a zoning plan that's established and you have a downtown that's ninety-eight percent developed. So those zones are, people tend to relate to those zones according to those R numbers, which is why it's written in the master plan that way, but it's not specifically zoning. That when you read the, when you read the text of the master plan, the R six says it's for, for this type of density, this, this lot size and so on, but it doesn't get into the specific zoning characteristics. But, but to, to give it a different designation just caused more confusion in my opinion. So I chose to use the zone designations for the residential areas.
Okay.
Commercial areas, you'll see it's different.
Okay, then, um, another point that you have, most of what's in the new goals and objectives is pretty, almost a mirror to what we had in nineteen ninety. Um, it says to provide suf, sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of land use, both public and private, according to the respective environmental requirements. Um, are you being, um, conscious, like, more conscious about environmental protection at this time in the township?
Am I, it's the boards.
Is, is the planning?
When, when both the board engineer and I write reports, we do, we are conscious, conscious about that. And clearly, if they have a, uh, if there are environmentally sensitive lands, they have to be identified on the plans.
Right, and, and.
The one issue that comes up is that many times, an entire site may have some sort of environmental constraint on it. Then the choice is, do you allow them to do some building on the site? Or you say, no, you can't build. And if you say, no, you can't build, you've, you've just acquired the site. The town's gotta acquire the site.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's called inverse condemnation. You can't build, so therefore.
So we could, and then could we turn that into green acres and that type of a situation where we?
You could, but you gotta get the money to buy it first.
Cause one of the, one of the paragraphs, and I'm not sure.
And just, just to go back, you gotta get the money to buy it first. To get the money to buy it first, taxes go up. And so people want you to buy the open space, but they don't want their taxes to go up and it's.
Catch twenty-two.
Yeah, it's catch twenty-two.
Well, I, I see in one of, um, I have to pull it up, um, that speaks about what you are trying to do now is to maybe where there's uh, in, where there's impervious ground cover to maybe create more pervious ground cover?
Mr. Sheriff, this is a new line of questioning. Is it, I mean, I think we've reached the five minutes and it seems, this is, yeah, we're well exceeded, well, well exceeded it, so.
There's no change in the impervious covered ordinance.
Yeah.
There's no change to any order.
No, it said that there would be, um, they'd be seeking where there is the, for the environmental part. So maybe Edward Diffiglia can speak on the environmental part of the master plan.
In terms of which way?
It said about, that there, that the township would look into where there's impervious ground cover, possibly there are areas to create more pervious.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we addressed more in this master plan specifically, and, and this is out of the experience that other municipalities have with court cases again being sued, is that we identified mitigating flood hazards as a higher priority throughout the document. And Jim can, can correct me if I'm wrong there, but that's, again, going back to the purpose of the master plan is to set this big broad vision, addressing flooding and the strategies that municipality will need to use to address flooding are not going to be one single way. It's not just gonna be impervious cover. So it allows the municipality, allows Councilman Fisher and the rest of them to take a deep dive look at what types of ordinances and policies will need to be put in place to address flooding. Whether that's reducing impervious cover, whether that's buying more blue acres, however that plays out, the master plan gives them the legal backing to be able to move forward to address flooding.
Yep, so are, are there areas that you're going to protect more in terms of open space?
I mean, that's, that's a question for the council.
Yeah, that's not, that has nothing to do with it. We're just making the recommendation. We're giving them an overview of what we believe the town.
Okay.
Suggestions.
Um, okay, I guess I would just like to say, I'd like you to consider possibly having a follow-up meeting to this, that we could just have more people attend.
You, you said that already. We, we'll take that under consideration.
I know, I know. I just wanted to close on that.
Alright, thank you. Who else?
Hello, planning board. I'm, uh, Peter Yunkunst, six ten, uh, Deal Road. And, uh, maybe I could ask to be reminded, uh, where the five minute rule is part of municipal code? Is it like a section or is that just something that?
There are guidelines for both the planning board and the board of adjustment.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, why would you waste your time on discussing that? Why don't you just get to the, your points about the master plan? I really, I, I, I find it objectionable that you sit here talking about the five minute rule.
I'd like a little bit more patience from you, Mr. DeBenedetto.
No, I wanna hear, I wanna hear what you think about the master plan. That's what we're here for.
I, I just, it's. So I think, I appreciate that there's a time for public comment tonight. Uh, I listened to what Mr. Lux said. I listened to what Mr. Cassidy said, what, uh, the others said. Uh, they seem to express some, uh, dissatisfaction with the preparedness of the plan. Uh, the detail of the plan, some things that were not clear in the plan. Uh, I heard Mr. Higgins, uh, who I've heard before, you know, explain a general approach and the reason for it. But there were some, some things that were specifically brought up and I think these are takeaways. And I guess one of the questions I have, uh, will there be a response uh, to the questions tonight? I hope they were recorded. Uh, I think an argument certainly was made by the public tonight uh, that they didn't really find, uh, everything they were looking for. Maybe a lack of detail, no evidence, uh, supporting some of Mr. Higgins' conclusions, uh, and.
Just to clarify, it's not Mr. Higgins' conclusions. This is the board's master plan. Just to clarify, it's not Mr. Higgins' conclusions. This is the board's master plan.
Okay, so you were the writer.
I was the author.
Were the author. Okay, so the author had.
They disagree with my conclusions and I thought they would have said so and they would have been changed, and there were some changes.
No, I appreciate that, that, that it really is a planning board document. So it just seems to me that we as the public, we didn't see a whole lot of new ideas. The planning board, Mr. Higgins, the writer, you know, we've gotten to a point where this township is mostly developed. So there's really not much said about any future plans. And I take it that that will just be something that the planning board will bring up as you go through your normal steps. There was no vision is kind of what I think I feel and what I hear other peoples expressed. And I give the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else would like to speak? Come forth, come, come forth, please. Have a seat.
I think I can solve this sitting versus standing. There's no podium, so it's hard when you have notes. So I think that's the mystery solved. Hi, my name, good evening. My name is Patty Kronheim and I live at forty-six Stafford Street. And I am very grateful, first of all, for the work that's been done so far on the master plan. I also want to note that Don Brockle of Deal Lake Commission and Laura McBride of the Deal Lake Watershed Association. Wanted to be here tonight for personal reasons. They were unable to like move children's weddings, things like that. But they are going to be sending in written comments that will deal with the need for green infrastructure, preserving land around Deal Lake. And maintenance of, of Deal Lake. So you'll be receiving those. I just want to give you a heads up. So, okay, for my comments, I just want to, first of all, agree that this is an opportunity. To plan where we're going to go forward. I think it's a good assessment of where we are, but I do think we need to have. That word vision keeps coming up and I, and I think it's an accurate term to, to use. I do agree with Ken Lutz's comments. And I think I'm going to just discuss two things. I'll be submitting written comments as well with more detail on a lot of different places. Where I think there could be edits and adjustments. But to give you background on me, I'm on the Shade Tree Commission. I've also spent my permission, professional career working on public policy on environmental and clean energy transition. So that's my area of, of expertise. The one glaring piece on this that I want to address is the absence of equity as a concept. Ocean Township is home to three overburdened areas and communities as defined by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I'm sure you're all aware of what an overburdened community is. It's thirty-five percent low income. Or forty percent representing themselves as minorities or forty percent having minimal English speaking ability. And Ocean Township is home to these communities. And I think that the New Jersey State Municipal Plan Endorsement Guidelines lists three equity best practices. For municipalities on how to address overburdened communities in their master plans. First is to cultivate awareness, so that means that all of you, all the elected officials, people like me on the Shade Tree Commission. Understand our overburdened communities and how our decisions may adversely impact those communities especially. Creating support, secondly, in diverse forums, which means a lot of outreach. There's no one from these communities in these meetings. It's hard for them to, for a lot of reasons. A lot of times for overburdened communities to come to these meetings, so that requires real outreach into these communities to, to get their feedback. And thirdly, the state recommends protecting and assisting vulnerable communities to really first do no harm. And also then to proactively look for opportunities to provide resources and support these communities. So they can have a better, healthy living environment. It's really essential, in my opinion, that our new master plan and process are grounded in community engagement, equity and inclusion. And that will help inform, this framework we're creating will help inform all of the decisions making going, going forward on all of our committees and, and commissions. For example, the master plan lists our open spaces, but doesn't discuss access or connectivity of open space areas. And our vision has to be that everyone has access to quality parks. Route thirty-five was mentioned by Ken and I agree with what Ken has said about this. You can have a close proximity to a park or green space, but if you can't cross thirty-five to get to it, it's inaccessible. And that's not an equitable solution. So when it comes from everything from bike trails to. To, you know, utilities to tree planting, all of this has an equity component. And I really think right up front in our, in our master plan should be those statements. And I have suggestions for in the purposes and the objectives, and purposes I would just simply put in the bullet and I will write this and send it to you. To ensure that Ocean Township is an inclusive and equitable place to live, work and play. That should be a purpose, I think. And the objective statement, we could write to achieve equity in our service delivery, decision-making and community engagement. Identify and eliminate the underlying drivers within our community that perpetuate racial inequality and provide opportunity and advancement for all. And that could be the objective. So I just think those, having those two pieces in there would actually help inform decisions. And the other piece, I just think that the township really needs to create. In accordance with the twenty-twenty-one amendment to the municipal land use law on the comprehensive climate resiliency plan that Ken mentioned. I think we really need to do a separate climate resiliency plan. If you want an example of a good one, the town of Danellen did it. And I think there's a lot of things missing in our master plan that need to be addressed and highlight specifically electrical demand. And I'm, I'm wrapping up, I'm sorry for going, but I'm trying to be. Electrical demand is going to double between now and twenty fifty and it's not just EV cars. I have the first total building electrification home in Ocean Township. I had the gas removed. I can tell you what happens to demand. Now, I also have solar and batteries, so I'm pulling less energy. But this is a huge issue and the town needs to really look at the capacity of our electrical grid more thoroughly. That needs to be studied and in an actual separate plan. We also need to really look at severe weather brought on by climate change and we need to investigate microgrids. And microgrid resiliency hubs for communities and we need to keep equity in mind when we do that as well and do a lot of outreach. And that would ensure power for communities for cooling centers, medical equipment, all of the essential things when the power goes down. This is so important, especially to overburdened communities. And I present my professional career conducting outreach of this nature. I know it's hard, but it's essential. Equity's not a check-the-box. Okay, it has to be a core piece of everything that we do as a township. And I think now, you know, today in twenty twenty-three, this has to be included in our master plan. Thank you for your time. I'll be submitting written comments.
So. Do you want to address any of those concerns? I mean.
I don't think at this point, no. I think a lot of what she's talking about makes sense, but it goes well beyond the, the purview of the master plan.
I mean, she mentioned future. I, I think we're looking at the utility service.
Yeah.
We're looking at circulation, renewable energy, rezoning of the town, open space.
Issue with, well, I've known Ken for years, but Ken has been involved in planning in the township for years. And how he can turn around and say we should take Route thirty-five and make it like Eaton Town. When the township has been fighting with the DOT for years to try and get more cross-access on Route thirty-five. And has gotten absolutely nowhere.
That's right.
And is continuing to get nowhere.
Yeah.
So that's, that's something, it, it baffles me that somebody would say we should be doing.
Come, come, come back up.
Yeah, I just, I, cause I abbreviated. I understand that Route thirty-five is a state, is a state highway. I fully understand that. I also understand that towns have to have a vision, they have to have imagination. And then you get people in the town excited to work for it and you lobby. I spent my life lobbying in Trenton. You can achieve anything if you actually get enough people together and do it and, and it beyond what a board does. And that's, that's what I, that's what I do. You can ask it. I stop gas pipelines. I've done things like that with people because you get enough people and excited. And if you have a master plan that excites people, has vision, you can help make that happen. I am happy and I will, right now on the spot, say I will volunteer my services. To help guide, to help that happen too. The other thing is in terms of electricity and resiliency. The plan mentions getting, purchasing and installing gas generators. I'm sorry, that's wholly inadequate for what we should be thinking long-term for our essential services. Yes, that's a good stopgap measure. But we should be talking about microgrids. We should be talking about really exciting. Possible wholly doable facility, energy supply like other townships have done. I think that needs to just be mentioned. I know we mentioned renewables, but it needs to be part, and I really think we need a, a separate plan. A separate climate resiliency plan.
Thank you.
To meet that. Thank you.
I, I think a separate plan might be a good idea. The, just so. The board understands and so the public understands that the. It's such a long name, but the, the plan at the end of the study that deals with climate change. Is actually a summary of the plan that the county developed for the entire county, including individual municipalities. And it was signed off on by the governing body, most of the department heads in the town and accepted. By, by the town. So that's why it's in the master plan the way it is. Cause that's, that's the plan that's currently in effect for the township.
I have a comment. As, as to the electric service, I did. Crafted a revision to our existing section. I can hand it out to the rest of the board.
Why don't you, why don't you just read it?
All right, so. My, my edits are, I'll just read the whole thing and then that's, that's the proposed change. Electric service is provided by Jersey Central Power and Light Company, JCPNL, owned and operated by First Energy Corp, which are based in Ohio. JCPNL has interconnections with other regional power companies. In the state, the overs, the overall power supply is not adequate to meet the anticipated demands of the township. The current electrical grid is not resilient in the face of increasing demands and natural disasters due to climate change. Further investments in grid capacity as well as smart grid technologies are required to meet anticipated peak load. And renewable energy demands within the township. The township must also explore the creation of a microgrid or microgrids to increase the resiliency of key infrastructure. And emergency operations within the township. And the rest of the, the rest of the paragraphs are pretty much unchanged after that. So I think that addresses some of the major concerns that we brought up.
It's fine.
And I think it'll, I, I also was wondering, we did an environmental resource inventory at the environmental, environmental commission a few years ago.
Yes.
I think if we added that to the end of the master plan as a.
Cap, a cap.
It's already outdated.
It's, it's outdated. There's a lot of recommendations in that that no longer apply. And if you make that part of the master plan, those recommendations then do apply. For example, if it says that this property should be developed for open space. And it's already developed and somebody wants to make a change to it, they've got a problem.
We removed those inconsistencies though and included some of the information.
It's too, too, too long and complicated a document to remove the inconsistencies.
Mr. Higgins, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought in the draft after our last meeting, we talked about including it on a reference.
We include it as a reference, yes. It's included in the open space.
And I think a lot of the public's concerns with, or their comments about lack of information, they could review that document and it could be a guide. Yeah, yeah.
If it becomes a functional part of the master plan, then it has much more validity, even though there's a lot of it that's outdated. That was a, for the most part, it was a compilation of prior studies, some of which were fifteen years old, some of which were five years old. And by now, it's, it's like the bike study. It's, it's a good study, it's, it's a good start, it's a good document to look at. But it would need to be updated. And maybe a recommendation in the master plan that that be updated to be more current would be a good idea.
I would love to have that. And Jack, as you know, that I have been going back and forth in this particular topic, wearing various hats for probably since. Since July of twenty nineteen on this very issue and I am, I agree with you. But I understand that, you know, having it in as a reference, especially when it comes to the different environmental resources that exist in town. That haven't been impacted by development, our steep slopes, our wetlands, our buffer areas, transitions. This document is something that. And, and to Mr. Howlett's point earlier, your, your twenty contaminated sites was, was very positive. That's a good spin. It's, it's well over forty. Having all of that information in the document, some of it is outdated. I will absolutely concede that. But having this document as a reference gives a lot of the folks in town the information they need. And I would absolutely support adding in a line in our, our recommendations about doing a new one.
On, on the climate hazard vulnerability assessment, is it possible that we could recommend that we at least. Maybe use the county guide as a starting point, but do our own more localized with local stakeholders, because I think that's important.
You'd like to make a recommendation in the master plan that, that they expand it.
Okay.
So that's two recommendations that, that I think we're proposing. Do we, do we, do we have any other comments?
Uh, I need to take, use the bathroom, so I'm gonna take a break. I have, do I have to at this? What's that? Do we need to, do, do we need to have another roll call to get back into session? We should, right?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So we're starting a hearing again, public hearing again. Please do a roll call for us, Claire.
Yes, here.
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 Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. All right, you could sit down.
I could sit?
Yeah, you can.
Is there a rental charge or?
No rental. Ron, is there a rental charge?
Don't ask Ron. He'll find. He'll find one. My name is Jack Curds. I live on Beecrop Place and I've been in this town for over fifty years. And. My kids are older than most of you.
Me too. I've been in this town for a long time.
Anyway, I'm glad I, I waited for a while because a lot of things that I wanted to just mention have been, have been mentioned, but I'll put my list together. And I offer them as things that, I, I have been through the plan. There are some minor things. There's a couple of typo-type of things, but they'll get fixed, I'm sure. But what I wanted to just bring out was some of what has been said already has, has been. I think you guys have jotted it down to do something with it, to study further or whatever. Let me just go through my list if I may. I think that there are, and this has been mentioned in different ways, a continuing update of things like tech, technology changes, social changes. Some of the things that have been general conversation tonight. I think it's important that the, that the basic master plan doesn't go to sleep when you sign it. That just becomes a living thing. And that gets to a couple of other things that I don't know whether they're in the master plan or not. Because some of the stuff is written in legalese, you know what that is. So for example, how do you make these things stick? There are, there are, there's continuing interest in updating the thing for technical changes, AI and all this other stuff that's going on. How do you keep track of that? Are you going to keep track of that? Will it be a continuing observance of what's going on in that world of technology? In the social changes that are going on? Is that going to be part of what you, what you guys will continue? Will it be continued monitoring by this panel of that one master plan? And what that says is, have you any idea when you're going to issue another master plan or revision to it? Is there a formality? I know there's ten, a ten-year recommendation by the state, but I don't think we've adhered to that really tight. Except it's incidental, one at a time, change this, this noun to this verb and so forth. So, so anyway, that's one thing. These changes that you're suggesting in the master plan, how do they get, how do they get enforced? That gets to the relationship of the best of the, of the planning board with zoning boards, for example. Do, do they have to stay within the master plan? Is there some latitude that they have when they do all some things that, how do you get involved in that?
The master plan is not the law. You need to pass ordinances. Based upon the master plan.
Right, and how do the ordinance get, you, you are in the, in the, in the planning board, you're pushing for ordinances to be written.
No, the governing body writes the ordinance.
Well, however you get it affected is one thing or another. You can recommend to the, to the governing body that they do this action. They take these actions. Are you, are you doing that?
That's, that by adopting the master plan, this board is recommending to the governing body that they do that. And just so you understand, there, there are three options that the governing body has.
Okay.
And this is outlined by the municipal land use law, the state law.
Okay.
The first is that they can effectuate a new zoning ordinance or changes to the zoning ordinance to implement the changes to the master plan. They can prepare a new ordinance that does not implement those changes. And I wouldn't say ignores it because they can't, by law, they can't ignore it. But by the, that, by the super majority of the members of the council, they can adopt an ordinance that's inconsistent with the master plan as long as they adopt a resolution stating their reasons for doing so. That's option two. And option number three, which is a major weakness in the state land use plan, is that they can do nothing.
Yeah.
And if they do nothing, there's, there's no ramification. And now, so, basically, those are the three options the governing body has.
Uh, and if the governing body accepts what you give, they just write an ordinance or whatever the technology is, is called, whatever technique is called. But they don't have to do that. They can do it with changes in it, right?
With changes in what?
And what, what the rest, the master plan has said.
The master plan is just.
Make coffee every morning and then, and the, and the council says, no, you make it only twice a month. They could make that, they could do that to it, right? Something like that?
The master plan is a policy, broad-based policy document.
That the council has to accept?
They don't have to accept it.
Okay.
They, as I said, they, they can develop zoning that's completely contrary if they so decide to, as long as they give the reasons for doing so. That's in the land use law. So, but the land use law also says, and just a, a minor uh thing, you said the land, the land use law recommends a, a, reexamining it every ten years. It doesn't recommend, it requires it be reexamined at least every ten years.
Always being kind.
And the township in the past does it reexamine much more frequently. But, but the way the things you're talking about get, get what, get identified by the planning board and the zoning board is through the applications that come to them. And the applications may have things in them that are, that deviate from the ordinance. And if they constantly have something that deviates from the ordinance and it's responsive to socio-economic or to technological changes, then they can recommend to the governing body, that the governing body consider amending the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So there's, there's ways to do it, but it's, the master plan is not the be-all, end-all that everybody seems to think it is.
So it has no enforcement capability?
No, it doesn't. The only enforcement is that the zoning.
Applications and trends.
If the governing body chooses to redo the zoning, that unless they can uh have a super majority vote and can give a resolution why it's different, it has to conform with the master plan.
Okay. I don't know where you. Oh, I guess you've kind of answered, uh, how does the master plan influence the zoning board?
Yeah. And it, it influences the zoning board with, well, the zoning board has, looks at various types of applications. The major ones they look at are what are called use variance applications. And then the applicant will bring in a planner such as myself who will look at the master plan and say, yeah, we wanna get this use variance, but here's the purpose of your master plan. And this use variance advances that purpose, so therefore you should grant the variance. Which is why the purposes in the master plan, I, I, I know what planners are gonna use it for. So I put them there in a way that it could do us the least damage when somebody comes in to, to testify for a use variance application. The less, the less said, the better.
Okay. Now, you rely on looking for things yourself. The whole panel does, and probably you, Jim, also. Uh, new things are happening, this is applied ocean township, that kind of thing. Uh, but um where else do you look? Do you go to the shade tree commission, the environmental commission?
Both the boards make an annual report, okay? And those annual reports include specific types of variances and different things that are frequent. And when they're seen to be frequent, maybe there did need to be a change in the ordinance, as we've done in the third story.
And, and the shade tree commission and the environmental commission also do reports on the applications that are reviewed.
Something keeps coming up, there's a reason that has to be, and then we have to do something about it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I'm a member of the shade tree commission. I don't know. There's been a lot of business going on, how do you protect the trees, for example, and somebody mentioned the inventory that was done not too long ago, uh, James. And uh, so, so that could some, somehow get paid attention and build in the master plan.
Not the master plan. Goes basically eventually to council and then they would speak to Jim and whatnot about writing up changes to the ordinances to reflect that.
And, and does it fit what is the existing master plan or do you have to add to the master plan or whatever? So there's a, there's a lot of back and forth.
No, you don't really have to change the master plan if you change the zoning.
Then what benefit does the master plan have to zoning?
It's required by the municipal land use law that you have to have a master plan with certain elements in it in order to have a zoning ordinance. That's, that's the su- that's the sum of the impact of the master plan.
So you have to have a master plan or you can't have ordinances?
You can't have a zoning ordinance.
A zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
So that's the government running the government?
And then, and then the master, and then this land use law says, oh, by the way, zoning doesn't have to agree with the master plan if the council meets certain conditions.
If my kids acted that way, I think I would be a little upset. If they would, if they would.
Nobody ever said it makes sense.
That's what I was saying. I was trying to be nice. Uh, okay. So if I had anything else, I do appreciate your time. Oh, the historic, uh, one person mentioned the, the historic uh constructions and so forth, the different things that happened that has some historic value. I remember a place not too far from where I live that was given an award ten years ago, whatever it was, I don't know. When you mature like I have, uh, your memory fades a little bit. But I remember there was a year where they were going around claiming all these homes that had a hundred-year history to them. They were the old historical uh picture of the town as it once was. Are you still doing that? Is that part, does, does the planning board think about that at all? Having any, giving any value to the historical qualities of var- I see these things on the wall, for example. That's the history of Ocean Township. Does, is that part of what master planning considers as well?
Well, the master plan recommends that certain areas be studied for their historical character. To determine whether or not they can be designated as historical districts. And then if they are designated, then by law, the, the town is allowed to develop architectural standards for those areas.
Okay. And you could have more than one district having those things. Okay.
Mr. Higgins, just, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm a little fuzzy on this one. If, if the town were to do that, they would also have to establish a separate historical preservation committee that has very specific requirements as to the memberships, including archi- architects and historians, correct?
And I, I'm not totally up on the law that I specific, but I, that's my understanding from having worked in Allenhurst and Lock Harbor.
Yeah, it would seem, would that be something that you guys might suggest, that somebody do something?
We rate, it's already suggested.
It's already in the master.
It is.
It's in the master plan.
Okay. I did read it. I just can't remember everything as I was.
It's okay. It's alright.
Uh, I think that's all I had for tonight. Uh, I think there's a lot of work that goes on here. I don't know if uh each and every one of you is involved. I know at least one person is knee-deep in this. Uh, and I, I imagine you all have some time that you dedicate to it. Because uh, I guess you all live here, don't you? Is, are you all residents?
We're all residents.
That's one of the requirements, right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, then let me let you off the hook so you can get home and have your uh little handicap, uh taste of whatever for the night. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up that hasn't been heard?
I'm leaving the chair.
As soon as he vacates the chair, it's all you. There are a few.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
That's alright. Hi, I'll be quick. Emily Hadea, Seven Old Farm Road. I have two quick questions. The first one is, um, are there a lot of changes from the original master plan to this one? That if one had to say, let's redline it or highlight it, would it take up one page, two pages? Or is it just pretty much not that many changes?
It's, quite frankly, it's irrelevant because this is a whole new master plan.
Okay.
And it's not based on the other one. It's based on what exists in the town now. And what exists in the towns now is vastly different than what existed in nineteen ninety. Plus the fact that was updated at least, I think, close to fifteen times in that thirty-year period.
Okay.
To try and track all that, I think.
That's understandable. Okay. And then the word zoning was mentioned. Is there anything in the new master plan is gonna, that's gonna allow for differences in zoning requirements? Not necessarily that different areas will be rezoned, but different laws that would affect each zone.
No, no.
Nothing that you're aware of?
That's up to the council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
One other quick comment is that I think it would be helpful if um I understand that we have to set a timeline because you never know how many people are gonna show up, but maybe if more than one meeting is allowed for the public to speak. You know, maybe if someone was here last month but wanted to say something because it's such an important matter and to just allow people on one night to speak, I think it's a little bit uh inconsiderate, if I may say so myself. But thank you and I appreciate, I appreciate your time as volunteers. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, so we'll, we'll close the uh public hearing?
Uh, second, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Roll call for that. Mark, would that be appropriate?
All in favor?
Would you do aye, all in favor for the?
Sure.
Close? Yeah. Roll closing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
So the ch- the changes that uh from tonight were, can you go through them?
There's actually, I find three changes.
Okay.
That you would add a, a, an indication as a recommendation to update the natural resource inventory.
Correct.
Um, recommend the uh environment, for the environmental section, that the climate change-related vulnerability uh
Assessment.
Assessment be uh expanded.
Be, be, uh, that, that there be a study done to expand that also.
Okay.
And thirdly, the language that Mr. May be putting through.
I, I have some more comments too.
What?
I have.
Some more comments.
Okay.
Oh, but um, you know, I.
So let's reopen the public hearing. Go ahead.
I'm not necessarily the public.
Well, you, you are. Shoot.
Um, the fir- the first comment I had was, um, I wanted to address the font in the document was Comic Sans. I think it should be a little bit more.
The document is going to be reformatted, including the fonts.
Okay.
Yes.
Cause um uh, I also want.
Just so the board understands, my son-in-law is an editor of an international uh trade magazine and he has slapped my wrist and said he's gonna reformat the document.
Um, the other comment I had was, um, I think we should mention uh allowing, or looking at allowing for ADUs or accessory dwelling units, uh, especially in the R-one and R-two zones.
That would be important.
Yeah, but I'm saying it, it could be a suggestion in the master plan to then refer to council.
I didn't, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I didn't hear what you said.
We didn't hear what you said. Repeat it.
Uh, I said, we should allow, we should um mention the master plan to suggest to allow for accessory dwelling units or ADUs, like known as mother-daughters or carriage houses. Um, especially in the more opens, mo- more open areas of town. I think me as a young person, I'm still in my early thirties. Um, I'm looking at housing affordability, um, and it's hard for me to imagine living here with the current trends. So I think that's a way to keep, and we, we, we're discussing declining populations of young people in town. The town is aging and part of that is because of the housing affordability. So I think it's important to, to start thinking about these uh alternatives.
You had a five minute for him too? Oh my god. Relentless.
Oh, wow.
So, so that, that's my, well, it's one of my major comments. I think we should allow, I think we should reform zoning to allow for incremental development. Uh, we have a lot of missing middle housing. It's all very, there's a lot of single family, but not a lot of duplexes or.
The only problem that administratively speaking about ADUs is we have so many cabanas in town. Okay, they're probably four thousand dollars a month the way the rental market's going. You can only have the, you can only have air conditioning. I think it opens up Pandora's box by going down the ADU.
I mean, yes and no.
Oh, no, yes.
It, it, so.
Administrative, I'm saying strictly administratively speaking. It, it opens up Pandora's box when it comes to, um, you know, uh, and when it comes to um impervious surface. And we're trying to reduce impervious surface, but we're gonna have another dwelling in.
It would, it would, it would still have to comply with the overall building and lot coverage. You, you know, if, if, if somebody puts in, you know, a cabana, whether it's somebody's living in there or not, it's still the same impervious coverage.
I believe it would be something that would be part of the zoning that the governor and council support, but not part of the master plan.
I still think it should be in there. I think it should be a suggestion to, to just review it and look at it.
You, you could, as part of the memo to the mayor and county, you say, you know, we ask that you look into the adoption of an ordinance for ADUs um, you know, in the future.
Alright. Um, so going through the, I have a whole, I have more on my list here.
Go ahead. Spit it out.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna see more incremental development, so that's building up certain corridors and how to make them more walkable districts. Uh, and I think it was addressed somewhat in the current draft of the master plan. Um, I think if we flush that out a little more, it'll, it'll be a more holistic plan, especially.
Did you ever get close to the mic? I got a text from Mr. Rue that I'm picking you up.
Alright. I, I think mine's weird.
You don't have to hold the button.
No, this one you do.
Really?
Yeah. So um, I, I wanna see more incremental development in town, so that's more walkable districts. Um, you, you know, if we think about other areas that people wanna go to, you know, we think of Red Bank, Asbury Park. Um, it's not high-rise development. It's, you know, four stories or three stories and, you know, the setbacks are, are fairly close to the street. Uh, it's more pedestrian-friendly. I think um, we wanna have streets that are designed for people first and cars second. Um, so we want, I think that's a direction that we should be going in it. You know, if we wanna reduce traffic and reduce uh you know, traffic accidents and the need for all these signalization, I think the, the solution is really to get people out of their cars and walking around. And I think it'll increase the general health and welfare of the public as well. Um, so I, I think that's something we need to look at. And I think it should be at least mentioned in a paragraph or two in the master plan, that these should be elements that we should be considering in the future. I think that's pretty much all I had.
I guess, I guess that, just uh for me, it's the last meeting, we all kinda gave our opinions about what was going on.
And I wasn't here.
Yeah, we kinda bantered them around and then we, that's when we came into an agreement for that. So do we now banter these around to kinda figure out the ones that we should have and not have in there?
Sure. Well, that's what we do.
Okay.
Yeah. So, isn't the circulation discussing? Isn't there a mention for sidewalks and curbing already?
I believe there is. And I know the councils and Jack and Dave probably can probably talk more about that. His, his council's focus is on that. But, um, no, I, I agree with both things that Jack said. I just don't know that should be in the master plan at this point in time or whether it's something we should be looking at as a goal for the future.
Well, can I, can I make a recommendation, at least on, on part of that? We do have a, a recommendation in there for the, to adopt a, a new engineered bike and pedestrian plan. Going back through and looking at the history of the previous one, it looks to me as if it was actually adopted as an element of the master plan. Could a new bike and pedestrian plan be adopted as an element through the reexamination process? Could a new bike and pedestrian plan be adopted as an element through the reexamination process of the master plan?
Yes, yes, of course.
So, we have what you're looking for in there. It's just when we have that study done as the recommendation and the council finds the, the funding to complete it, we adopt it as an element of the master plan. So we've already laid the groundwork for what you're requesting, at least on that piece.
I'm, I'm, what I'm, what I'm suggesting goes a little, a tiny bit further in that, um, I think that we should mention when we design roadways or when we improve roadways, uh, you know, it's not enough just to reduce the speed limit because the visual cues on the road are, you know, tell people subconsciously, this is a thirty-five mile an hour street. You know, you have double yellow lines in the middle and striping. Um, people are just naturally going to go fast. You know, it, part of, uh, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm an electrical engineer, it's a different field. Um, but my understanding is that, uh, we should be redesigning the layout of streets, you know, through, you know, making the striping closer together, you know, bump outs on the cur-, like on the, on the corners, um, similar to what they did in West End in the, in the little commercial district they have there. Uh, the traffic only goes ten miles an hour down that little strip because it's tight. If you, you know, visually, you're not comfortable driving fast. And so it's very pedestrian friendly. I think if we had, um, in some of the districts, maybe, for example, on the Monmouth Road corridor, I think is ripe for that. Yeah, and I, I think, you know, transitional zoning in that area is also something we should look at. You know, missing middle housing, more duplexes and small townhouses and, and things like that. Um, or three and four story, not super visually intrusive, you know, we're not talking about apartment towers. We're just talking about, you know, more medium density housing uh, to try, try and combat like the affordability and open space issues we have.
So, uh, again, just going back to the one that I think that we can come to some sort of resolution on tonight, uh, the bike and pedestrian plan, a lot of the elements you're describing are complete streets and road diets. Those are all things that would well be within the purview of the council to tackle. They could do a complete streets ordinance tomorrow if they wanted to. It doesn't need to be in the master plan, although it would be really great, Councilman Fisher, if you wanted to consult with us and talk about some of those things.
As I've discussed before, and I will repeat what I've said in the past, the council is one hundred percent committed to redoing as many roads and curbs and sidewalks to make the town much more bike friendly, walker friendly, with the, the guise of safety, of course. But keep in mind that these things do cost money, they cost a lot of money. Um, so the answer to your question is yes, we have put speed humps in, we have redesigned streets. We are going to redesign corners that are unsafe. We have listened to our residents about being able to bike to the Wayside School, bike to these different places. So the answer is yes, it's all part of the master plan, or at least part of our general plan as a council. But, you know, once again, there's only so much we could do on a day and day basis. You know, revenue is, is a limited amount of money and that's, uh, that's always the problem. We would pave every road in Ocean Township tomorrow if we could, but that's not a reality. So the answer is going forward, as by our township engineer, as we deem certain roads of needing repaving, we are always doing these things, curving, you know, sidewalks, stripings, safety, crosswalks. It's a never-ending process. I think Jack could even attest to this. We discuss this ad nauseam every single meeting. And safety is paramount, it's the most important thing. We don't want to have any issues. We don't want to hear about anybody getting hit by a car, you know, or blowing through crosswalks. These are really important issues to the town council, so yes, this is something that we do every single time we meet, okay?
Well said. Okay, so was there anything else that we were adopting? You were, you were, you were reading through.
Yeah, I was.
Can you reread through, please?
I, I don't know how you want to handle the, the last, the ADUs though.
I don't, I don't, I, I, I don't think that, I don't think that's on the table.
Okay, okay. Basically, it would be the master plan.
What, what, could I say one thing before you go in? What about this median housing?
The missing, missing middle housing?
Mi- mi- middle housing. Can you address that? Is there any way to, uh, suggest?
They, they go to the zoning board of adjustment for a height variance and at that time they can be approved, just like they. I don't believe it's a master plan.
It's not a plan suggestion.
It is, people come in with applications like that and you'll see some, certainly after December first come through. I gotta get that in there.
Cause you are.
You will have, but there are some applications coming in with that element involved. As, as long as the developer is willing to come before the board, then those elements are taken care of in that way. They have to come before the board anyway. They have to come before you for site plan approval.
I'm, I'm just wondering, but.
You have the opportunity to approve applications that have that element in them. It gives you the freedom, or not, depending on how good the application is.
Uh, I was just wondering if, you know, the master plan being a document that we're looking, at least for another ten years, where we're trying to set a vision, shouldn't it be included in the master plan in that way so that we can, you know, you know, it's just send the message out that we're looking for these, you know, this is what we vision for the town for the next.
I think the vision of the town to a great extent is that of the elected officials.
I, and I think, I think what you're going towards, Jack, is, uh, actually considered in one of the objectives, number two. Says recognize that the future development will likely be influenced by changing technology, socioeconomic patterns and climate. Allow the flexibility for the preparation of adequate guidelines for the future development, redevelopment and restoration of residential, commercial and industrial sites in response to such changes. And I think that really goes towards the fact that the governing body should be looking at more creative ways to get more housing in the town. And I, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's, it's a major problem, not just in Ocean Township. It's a major problem throughout the state and throughout the country.
Okay, can you continue with our?
Other than that, the three changes that, that if you were moved tonight to adopt what is in front of you, plus direct Jim to include a recommendation to update the natural resource inventory, include a recommendation in the environmental section that the climate change related vulnerability, uh, be re-studied.
Will be, be, uh, yeah, be reviewed and expanded where appropriate.
Where appropriate. And include the language that Jack gave before.
Do you want, can you bring that, uh, piece of paper that you had with the language?
Yeah, but there's, there's some more edits to it that, or I, I made a little tweak to the language.
I just want, I just want you to put it on record. Yeah, so can you bring it to him so he could read it to the record?
I mean, uh, what I read was.
I didn't want it to be whatever he said. That's not.
He read it, he read it. He read it into the record, but.
Okay.
He's gonna, he's gonna send it to me by, uh.
By email.
Okay.
So that if, if you were to move tonight to, to adopt what is in front of you, plus these three items, um, then the final version will include those.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to adopt and the master plan with those three items.
I'll second. I'll second.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I make a motion to close.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
And we're all aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.